July 22nd. Phyllis, can you call the roll, please?
Chairperson Nick Folsom.
Here.
Commissioners Rita Dozel, Joanne Eaton.
Here.
Wallace Harden here.
Robert Mummerts.
Here.
Tom Ricker.
Jim Satill.
Here.
Planner Fred Fox.
Here.
Thank you. Next is public comment on consent agenda or non-agenda items. We'll be talking about the flood mitigation along Coal Creek later, so I will have another opportunity for public comment there if that's what you're here to hear about and speak about. We will do a separate public comment for that. So, on our consent agenda tonight is the approval of the June 10th meeting. That's the only item on our consent agenda. So, any public comment on consent agenda or non-agenda items. Okay, seeing none. Move on to the consent agenda, the approval of the June 10th, 2014 meeting minutes. Anyone have any comments or corrections to the meeting minutes? We have a motion to approve the minutes.
I will be approved the minutes.
Motion by Commissioner Mummerts, second by Commissioner Eaton. All those in favor? Pass is unanimous. Next is discussion and recommendations concerning flood mitigation along Coal Creek within Original Superior. We'll have a staff presentation, and then we'll do public comment, and then the commission will have discussion. So, we'll do public comment before the commission gets into question and answer and discussion. So, would you like to go ahead?
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Alex Aronello. I'm with the Public Works and Utilities Department, and with me today is Dave Heinrich, our civil engineer who's been the project manager on this project. And we've been working with Urban Drainage and Flood Control District for the last two to three years to define flood mitigation improvements along Coal Creek within Original Superior. And to give you a feeling of what the issues are, we'd like to show you a little video of the flooding that occurred last September to kind of show you that we do have issues to deal with along this area. Lisa's going to help me bring that up, and...
...I'm going to have a chairperson. Oh, shoot. Sorry.
There's basically master plans that are put together that put together these estimated flows that you designed to and for our reach where the Second Avenue Bridge structure is a 100-year event would equate to 3,800 to sort of 3,800 cubic feet per second and the 500 about 7,300 cubic feet per second. So here you can see we're roughly about a 400-year storm event was what hit last September. And the 100 years is kind of the typical benchmark of what you design your infrastructure to because 500 year is obviously a very rare event and you can end up with infrastructure that's much bigger than it probably needs to be. So for this structure, the Second Avenue replacement structure, we're looking to pass the 100-year flood event without any overtopping. And the reasoning behind that is it is a local road and we will be providing a second access point elsewhere, hopefully here in the near future. So that was some of our justification with going with the 100-year flood event for the structure that we're replacing. So this is a section view looking at the bridge from down in the creek. This is looking east. So here's the bridge. And it's not actually a bridge. It's actually a culvert right now. It is a three-sided concrete box culvert. So it's a natural stream bottom. It's got concrete walls and a concrete top. It was built back in 1991. So it's significantly newer than we originally thought. We did find some aspelt drawings for this. So the two options that we're looking at for replacement are this is what we're calling the three-sided super box. So this is, and this red outline right here is basically the open area of the existing crossing. So this would be a new three-sided box culvert that's 65 feet. Instead of right now, it's around 30 feet in width. So that's one option. We'll get into some more detail. And then this is the other option that we looked into. It's called the overbank culvert. So the idea here is that the existing structure would remain and we would build a new box culvert just to the north of the existing structure. This would be about 28 feet clear span. So both of these end up having the same capacity and both of them will pass the 100-year event with the water sitting pretty much right there at the bottom of the structure. Here's a little more detail of what we call the three-sided super box. So this one, we are demolishing the existing structure completely. We put a new 65-foot wide. This would be cast-in-place concrete. Total project cost, this is all in for the entire project, the structure, all the channel improvements, the design, all of that. 1.6 million. This is a looking, just kind of a plan view, looking at street level, 30 feet, 35, yeah, 35 foot total width, which is wider than the current structure. Here's the existing structure. And then this is kind of a plan view that shows rough scale, you know, looking down on the top of it, how big it would be. The second option that we've been looking at is what we call the overbank culvert. We do retain the existing structure. We construct a new culvert 28 feet wide. Total project, again, everything, channel improvements, structure, design, 1.2 million. So about $400,000 less than the three-sided super box. And here's, so this does have some design limitations and we'll get into that in a second. Here's a comparison of the two. So this is actually, this is the older super box. I apologize. So the new super box limits actually come up almost to the same point as the overbank. So this shows the existing structure here in green. This is the overbank culvert. And then the new super box would actually come further. This was a previous option we looked at where we were lowering the inberth. So apologize for the confusion on that. So quick comparison between the two. The three-sided super box, 1.6 million. So it's, it is the most expensive, but you have greater design flexibility. You've got a brand-new structure. You can, you can kind of pick and choose in a way what you want to have that structure do. There's no center support, so it's a clear span for the whole width of the floodplain. And you do have a natural stream bottom, which is excellent for ecological reasons. It is the most expensive and because it's a bigger cast-in-place structure, it would have a longer construction time. There'd be more disruption to the residents during construction. The overbank culvert is the least expensive and one of the biggest reasons we really started looking at it is because it could possibly, given the current funding we have, there's a very good chance that if we pick, if we end up going with this option, we could do the entire project in the first phase. Rather than, right now, we don't have all the 1.6 to be able to do everything right now. So we'd have to do as much as we can with the funding that we have. And in the future, you know, when we have enough money, we can come back and finish out the project. So that was one of the biggest reasons we really started considering this. The existing structure does remain in place. There's a faster construction time, but you do have less design flexibility because you're constrained by that existing structure that's already there. You do end up with a center support right here. So you do have some, you know, that could cause debris to hang up. Interesting thing is when from the September floods, there was pretty much no debris that got caught up on the bridge. There was a little bit that got stuck in some of the utilities that are hung from the bottom of the bridge, but no major tree blockages, you know, that, so that was pretty interesting to see after that sort of flooding event. So you would have center support. You do end up with two structures with different ages. So the existing bridge that's out there is 23 years old and you'd obviously have a new one. So you've got kind of different lifespans for each of those structures. And given that there's no, you're stuck with that existing width, there's really no provisions for sidewalks, although you could add a separate, you know, pedestrian-only bridge over the creek at a later point.
Okay. So we've gone to the board several times with the two or three options that we've developed, gotten some feedback from them as well as the public. And I wanted to summarize some of the things we heard from the town board. They want to limit impacts to private property, especially with the channelization work. They want, they want additional pricing needed for the entire project. And so those, the figures we've given you, 1.6 and 1.2 is the entire cost. And actually, what we're going to present to the board is cost with the, an additional pedestrian bridge as well. So they have that. And that's about $150,000. So you can compare that with the super box. Really was not consensus from the board in the issues of sidewalks along Second Avenue across the structure. So I think they, there were various opinions from the board members. I don't think they reached consensus on that. They wanted, they had a desire to do as much of the total project in the first phase as possible. And that's why we've really concentrated on that overbank culvert option. Public, a lot of the public are here tonight, so I'm sure they'll be coming up and providing their comments. So sidewalks along Second Avenue structure were not preferred. It wasn't something that was high on their priority list. They, I think the public there really wanted the flood control improvements done first and make sure, get those done in lieu of, you know, if we had to postpone sidewalks, that was how they would want to do. Although even the question of having sidewalks there was questionable to some of the public. Center pure support structure is not preferred. Again, we have trade-offs because the cheaper option has that center pure support. Aesthetics, some residents prefer to keep Second Avenue structure simple, you know, less costly, while some prefer more aesthetically pleasing features. We'll show you some options for the aesthetic treatments of the bridges and, and limiting impact to private property is important to that neighborhood. And we need to go out and discuss the improvements with the property owners. We've had numerous discussions with them. And as these plans evolve, we'll go out and show them how it's going to affect their properties. And we've tried to minimize those impacts, save the mature trees. Just from, again, getting back to the sidewalk option, when we had a super box option, we presented this to the board. You could do, we were proposing a 32-foot wide structure with the super box. And you can either have two 11-foot lanes with attached walks, or you could just have bike lanes and provide, the bike lane would be an additional area for residents to walk. Now, note out there, if you've been out there to South Superior and even Original Superior, there aren't sidewalks in most of that area. They have gutter pans. And so there's no real places for people to walk. They'll walk on the street and that's, there's low volumes and they're okay with that. Be aware that we, we don't meet ADA issues down there. There's no, you know, a wheelchair has to mix with traffic. They have to be on the same road that traffic has. The gutter pans are difficult for wheelchair users. So in that whole part of town, we really don't have good ADA accessibility. And the question is, do we provide it here when you don't have it the rest of that area? So these are the bike lanes, 32 feet of pavement. Matches the width on the north side. So the south side, it's a little narrow, the street, the actual street width. 32 feet matches the streets that are built on the north side, Second Avenue going north of the creek. Similar in street character on the north side, pedestrians do not have protection across the bridge. Sidewalks will connect to asphalt walks north of the bridge. And if Rogers' property develops, there'll most likely be sidewalks, I think, on the south. So south of Coal Creek, if Rogers' property's developed on the east side, we'd most likely require them to have sidewalks. But, I mean, that's our kind of opinion. But, so we may have sidewalks there in future, but we don't have them now. Provides a secondary barrier for the bridge protection from vehicle damage. So there's a curb there. So the vehicle would run into the curb before they would hit the guardrail. Also wanted to show this. This is potential for providing pedestrian crossings in the future. If we don't, if we do the overbank culvert alternative and don't have pedestrian facilities on the bridge, and say Rogers' develops with sidewalks, we could put an attached pedestrian bridge here to connect to the Original Superior. They may have a circulation system where you could put a bridge over here. There also is another option, you know, we have the Coal Creek Trail coming down here and to connect that trail with the Rogers' property. And we're also thinking about providing a trail along the McCaslin here. So that could be another option. And then Rogers' property could tie in there. So there's two or three options for providing pedestrian facilities and connections in the future. Dave will talk about a little bit about the aesthetic, personal aesthetic treatments.
So this is basically the view of the bridge today. You've got metal guardrails on the side. And to be clear, the pricing that we have, the 1.2 and the 1.6 includes this level of aesthetic treatment. So any aesthetic upgrades would be cost upgrades to what we've presented here tonight. So these are just some various pictures. This is the existing McCaslin Bridge. It's got these stone pillars at the end and this decorative metal rail. So there's various, I mean, you can go as crazy as you want trying to do aesthetics on a bridge. Our general thought was that if we went with the overbank culvert where you're keeping the existing structure, it might make the most sense to just stick with the simple metal rails or metal guardrails. Whereas if you're doing the super box, it's a new structure, perhaps then it might make sense to do something a little nicer with some of the columns. Here's some other views. So here's basically, this is more or less what you would kind of end up with. This is a triple-cell box culvert. So, you know, it's just concrete. There's no facade, but you can add, you know, decorative pieces on the side if you want. You know, you've got private property on both sides of the structure. There's no trail access through here. So I think if you were to do upgrades on the side, you know, not many people are going to really see that. Most of the experience of people crossing the bridge is from the bridge itself. So we didn't think there was a whole lot of sense behind really spending, if you're going to spend money, I don't know if it's really best spent on the sides of the structure. And here's just a couple more kind of perspective views. So here's essentially what we have today with the metal rails. Here's, the red outline is the existing structure. This is if we went for, you know, with the new structure, it's a little bit wider, with just metal guardrails. Or this is, you know, another kind of aesthetic look with, if you went to something similar to what you have on the McCaslin Bridge, which a few of the board members and some of the community felt that it might be nice, you know, if you're doing a new structure, to put something in there that's a little bit nicer. Some didn't. I mean, it was, it was almost about 50-50 between people that thought it was worth the money and some people didn't. And I'll let Alex close it out with, kind of, these are the main discussion points that we want to leave.
So we'd like to, some direction on these items, the type of structure. And you saw some of the pros and cons for each different type. We've been focusing on the, kind of, the lower-cost option because of the impacts on the budget and trying to get all the flood mitigation, channelization work done. But I think you, you need to look at it from a planning standpoint. A budget is, probably should not be in your consideration anymore of planning. And then the street section options, and really if you choose the overbank culvert, you don't really have room for the sidewalks and the bike lanes. So that's kind of a moot option. And then any wall or bridge rail aesthetic treatments. Again, this, this structure's going to be in place for 40, 50 years. So there's the time to make these, those types of decisions. And, you know, we'll look back on some of these things with the budget saying, why, why don't we do some of these other things that won't be. So we'd like your opinions from the planning standpoint. I mean, looking at things from a big picture. I think Rita, you want to read Rita's comment? Because I can address that?
Let's do public comment. And then what we'll do is we'll go into commission questions and I'll read Commissioner Dozel's comments at those times, or at that time. So at this time, let's go ahead with public comment. If you'd limit public comment to five minutes apiece and state your name and address as you come up. Thanks.
Gladys Forshee, 404 South Third Avenue. Out of the four of you, who went down and looked at the bridge before this meeting?
Good. Public comment. Let's, it's, we're not going to do Q and A.
Okay. I have a right to ask that question.
I've walked across that bridge dozens of times. So I don't know that I need to come down before that meeting.
Okay. That's fine. That's what I wanted to know. And the rest of you have not been down there at any time?
Okay. We don't need to address Q and A.
Yes, we do need to address it because it is, it is information that I need as a resident. Because I'm going to tell you that since none of you have been down there, you saw the flood picture. You did not live through the flood. You do not drive that bridge every day, day in and day out, multiple times. So you really have no information at all about this project. Because what staff has presented to you is not, and I repeat, is not what residents want at all. We do not want sidewalks. They did tell you that. We do not want the box culvert, or whatever it is that they call it. That bridge did not go out last September. You put those box culverts in, you get all the trees that come down from the open space area and the creek that was not cleaned out and kept cleaned out over the years. It's going to block that more. It's going to block the box culvert more, which is going to back the water up on Charles Street, which is going to back the water up on Third Street or Third Avenue north of the creek. And that, it is not what we want. It absolutely is not what we want. It is the mayor that wants sidewalks. He doesn't live down there. We do. And as you just said, then if you've walked it, ridden the bicycle, whatever, that, it isn't necessary to have sidewalks and bicycle paths and whatever. We have already told the town board, we do not want any decorations on the bridge. Just leave it the way it is. We don't want a McCaslin bridge down there at all. And 1.6 million dollars is way too much money to spend. Or 1.2 million, whichever that you, whichever figure you want to use. Alex and Dave have been told repeatedly, they know very clearly, very well, what we residents want. And I understand the 21st century government going through this process and attempting to educate you with, you know, their facts and everything. And that's the reason that until you go down there and really look the scenario, you are not qualified to make a decision about this Second Avenue Bridge.
Okay. Other public comment?
Hi. My name is Pat Kaprowski, 208 Third Avenue in Old Town. So essentially, I've spoken to the board several times, but I've never spoken to you folks. My property's essentially west of the Second Avenue Bridge as it sits to the north side. So Coal Creek runs through my property. Couple of points that were made today. The existing bridge fared just fine through the flood. It did. That structure is, it's new enough to where it could potentially, I think, last a long time. You know, there are no oversized loads going through town, nothing that would damage that bridge as it sits. The overbank culvert design would actually relieve pressure to that bridge in the event of flooding. I think that's a viable point to be made. One thing that wasn't brought up with the design team, with the super box design that they have, the upstream requirements to my property, it's going to affect about 80% of my property. All my trees will be gone. I'll essentially just have creek bed out there. I cannot get behind that project.
Which one again?
The three-sided box culvert, the new bridge.
Okay. The super?
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
The, the overbank culvert, I've had limited discussions with Dave and Alex. They came to my place. I see a lot of room for discussion with that, and I'm encouraged by that. It's going to limit severely the impacts to my property. It'll be pretty much confined to the east end of my, of my land. And it'll still leave me with usable land, which is important as well. The sidewalk thing, again, this started out to be a flood mitigation, provided the town with flood relief. I'm all for that. Again, you know, one thing I'll agree with with Gladys, it is the mayor and maybe one other board member that have this sidewalk thing stuck in their head. So now all of a sudden, this big bridge has to go in, so they have sidewalks. The pedestrian bridge, I feel, is a good option. If the town's going to develop on the east side of Second Avenue, I feel that impact, sidewalks, bridges, whatever, should be on that side when it, when and if it happens. I can't see sidewalks being put in at the expense of my property, which, you know, that big new bridge with sidewalks, that will essentially just clear out my entire stretch of land. So. Any questions for me?
Thank you. Additional public comment?
Ted Chavez, 401 South Second. One thing that they did mention was cost of 1.6 to 1.4. But the difference in that is getting first stage?
Done.
Getting that first stage done. That's the most important thing. Bridge has nothing to do with it right now. We lost a levee up there. That needs to be taken care of. And I think that's where these guys are driving to, is getting the first stage done coming into the second stage. Now, I totally get the cost, but the super bridge is not going to fix the first stage. The other bridge will, because there's going to be money there to do it. So I think we really need to look at the cost of what we're doing and what more we could do with the money instead of just running away on bridges and sidewalks or bike paths. You know, a long time ago, they said Superior's Old Town. We're going to leave it alone. Leave it the way it is. That's the original Superior. That's, that's what we expect. You know, we know we need a bridge sometime down the road. This flood was a bad one, but we've also seen it bad before. And we all went through it without sidewalks, went through it without bike paths. The sidewalks on Rogers' plan, I get what the mayor's talking about there. He's talking probably one sidewalk going on the east side of Second Avenue. It's across the street from me. I get what he's saying there. That's going to be a new development. That's, that's what they're looking at. But the original town is what everybody else is saying. We don't want the sidewalks in. But you put them one spot, it's going to grow to a different spot. So we're making sure we don't want the original to get away from the original. That's all we're looking at. But the cost is big. I think Alex did a lot of good work on looking at first stage. Is it first stage? You had one, two, and three stages, right? They looked at it all. And I think that's what they need to concentrate on. If you walk up the trail and look way up on Turkey Farm Hill, what we call Turkey Farm Hill, and work yourself down, yeah, the water did come over the levee up there. But it came over for a reason, because no one took care of the second creek below it. So if that was the overflow and that was taken care of, we wouldn't have that water all come down the hill. And I know that wasn't taken care of because we had to push to put the lower bridge in down on the railroad bed just to get it pushed to the east. Well, that's where they were working when, when the water was flooded. They were trying to get that water pushed to the east side of Rogers' property. Well, that was mentioned at the time that they put it in. You've got to send the water on through. They didn't worry about it at that time. And that's where that flooding came from. So look at the cost as far as what stages we could get done. The less money, we're getting more done. Am I right? For a hundred or a million, two, we're getting more done?
Well, it allows us to do all the channels.
That's what we're looking at. Because it doesn't do us any good to put a nice fancy bridge in and everything's still in floodplain. That levee's still not fixed up there. Another flood comes through, we still got the same problem. But we got a nice bridge. We need to fix that first, then come on down. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Additional public comment?
My name's Bob McLaren. I reside at 212 West Douglas Street. Basically, we went through the event and I think Ted's right in what he says, that the water going under the bridge is great. Getting it directed that way is terrific. But unless you take care of the channel upstream, we haven't dealt with the problem. And I think the fact that we're looking at 1.2 to do the overbank culvert, in my opinion, and I know a lot of my neighbors' opinion, that's, that's the best use of money. I don't know that we're concerned so much about sidewalks or bike lanes. We don't have it currently. And we use the roads just fine. We ride bikes, we walks, and there's not an issue. Besides that, if down the road, by what they've presented this evening, if you want to add that as a separate pedestrian bridge, well, then find the money for that in the future. In terms of the rail, or bridge rail aesthetic program, I'm perfectly fine with the railing that you have now. I think that the overbank culvert, a lack of sidewalks and bike lanes and keeping the aesthetics the way you have it is fine. And if that gives us the money then to work upstream and do the whole project, that makes the most sense.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Let's go ahead with Commissioner questions and maybe I'll start with Commissioner Dozel's comments. She couldn't be here tonight, but she sent some comments in by email and I'll just read those into the record, just that we've got them. Following are my comments regarding tonight's discussion on the Second Avenue Bridge. Based on my site visit and the packet information, I'm inclined to agree with the overbank culvert recommended by, a recommendation of staff. I would rather see the cost difference between overbank culvert and super box spent on a future pedestrian bridge across Coal Creek. My initial thoughts are not to spend the extra money on decorative bridge railings. Keep existing style until such time as the Rogers' property builds out and similar design concepts can be deployed along Coal Creek. One question, will the overbank culvert be high enough for a pedestrian trail to go under or through it if desired? The open space committee is focused on helping to create the best Coal Creek corridor possible up to Second Avenue. This may someday include paths or trails along Coal Creek itself. Again, these are comments of Commissioner Dozel, who couldn't be here tonight. So we'll start with Commissioner questions of staff and then following that, we'll go into discussion. And at the end of that, we'll craft a recommendation to pass along to the board. Go ahead. Commissioner South Town.
I think Alex, this is probably directed at you. We, you know, talked about the aesthetics and making this look more like the McCaslin Bridge. What would be the price tag on something like that?
Probably on the order of 50, 60,000.
And then there was talk about this phase one, phase, I assume, phase two, the levee, dealing with the levee. What's the game plan on that?
We have, can you bring up that for the drawings? Yeah. And we, I'm sorry, I apologize. We do have a drawing that shows some of those improvements that we've been working on designing. And the, so we're planning with the overbank culvert, we have about 1.2 million. And we can do both the overbank culvert as well as a number of channel, channel improvements to address some of the issues that occur, that we saw occur in the September flood event. So we'll bring up a little drawing that kind of shows those, but we're...
Is it deepening the channel?
Right. So we have 1.2 million. We can do all that. The super, the super box, we'd have to cut back on some of those other improvements to do the super box. And I also might add that we are going after some additional grants to get...
And I, I also might add that we are going after some additional grants to, uh, to get some additional funds to, to extend out into the county and do some improvements that were, uh, that are actually in county open space to address a lot of these concerns. So, all right, Dave, can you?
Yeah. All right, so this is, um, the actual grading plan for the project that we have right now. Again, north is oriented to the right, so Second Avenue here, Third Avenue here, the, the structure is here. Coal Creek, or Coal Creek is running along here. So, um, the discussion of this, these two-phase approach, originally, this was looked at as a three-phase project, but now we've split it at least into just, just two. Possibly could be one. We're just on this brink of being able to afford everything. Um, so the first phase is essentially this right here. So this is the, the new structure, whatever it ends up being, and the grading to essentially make that structure work, you know, because it's wider, um, it is a little bit deeper. Um, so there's, there's some work here. There are some trees that get impacted on, on Mr. Kaprowski's property. So this is, this is Pat Kaprowski's property here. This is Rogers' over on this, on this part side, uh, and then our, our right-of-way through here. So the structure, this is actually showing the overbank culvert. So the existing bridge is here. This is the overbank culvert, and this is the, the slope that comes down to, to meet that. So this is essentially the limits of that kind of first phase. The second phase, future phase, is essentially from midpoint of Mr. Kaprowski's property and then heading all the way up to the, the western end of the project, which includes this grading through the tight spot here at Third. There's a little bit of grading up here to the west of the, the Cuffner properties. Um, and then this is what's, we're calling this interceptor channel. So if you look, it, there's all these fingers of floodplain that come through that have been split by a number of things. There's the, the old railroad grade that comes here that causes this levee that holds waters back. There's all sorts of undulations in, in the open space back here, and it creates these big fingers of, of floodwaters. So the intent of this grading here is to pick up all those pieces of flood and, and direct them right back down into the, to the channel here. So, and we've also, after the flood, we, we went back out and walked at this, this is Mr. Sisk's property here, and just to south there, the, the Coal Creek, or the, the Mayhoffer Trail that runs right along here. So there's a little piece of town-owned property here, and we were looking at actually even doing some, you know, basically a cutoff channel there, again, to pick up any flow that might be coming down the hillside here. And again, pick it up and take it this way, rather than what happened in the flood, it went this way, and then, then all of these properties got affected by that. So this is, so from here all the way up is the, the future phase. That's the piece we're trying to, to fund. This represent, in, in rough orders of magnitude, this is about a half million dollars worth of work. And the rain remainder is down here. So, overbank culvert, you're left with about 700,000 for the first phase, and for the, uh, three-sided super box, um, about 1.1 million. Does that answer your question?
I think so.
Okay.
Are, are you saying that if we do the overbank culvert, then there's enough funding to do the other?
Yes.
Upgrades?
Yes.
But if we go with the super box, there won't be?
I don't think so. Yeah, given the pre, and especially with the pricing we've seen lately, it's just, it's not very, you know, it doesn't look very good. So, there's much better chance of, of funding it all with, um, with going with the overbank culvert option.
Okay.
And the, either option here doesn't really change the flood, you know, the, how we're going to change the floodplain with the future project. You know, the change of the bridge design really changes floodplains a little bit down here. So these really are, they kind of do stand alone in some respects.
Could you, uh, could you address that comment that the first speaker had about concerns that if we go with the overbank culvert, debris would get caught up in the?
Sure.
In the column?
So, um, why don't I go back to the presentation, actually, so we can get the pictures. Just do this one. So, so here again, the existing opening, overbank culvert, center support, clear span, super box. So, you've got the center support here. It's, it certainly has, compared to this, it's definitely got a higher potential to block debris. You've got a 28-foot clear span underneath. Uh, yeah, I think it's about 28 feet.
A 30.
30.
30.
30-foot clear span underneath right now. Like I said, this did not capture any debris in that flooding event. Not to say that it couldn't. You know, if you get a big tree down there, it certainly could. This is, this has got a, a much bigger open area, um, much less potential to have debris blockage. Um, so there is that potential that it could, you could be blocking extra debris. But I mean, we really went back and we looked at, you know, we just went through a flood of, you know, very large proportions, and we didn't have any issues here. So, that, that, to us, was a big deal. You know, it's like, this is what actually happened, and, and we didn't have any of those issues. So maybe the, the slight increase in risk for having the center support is, is outweighed by the fact that we can do the whole project, which, you know, that, that, really, this project, the first phase of this project does not have huge impacts on reducing floodplain for the project. It really is the, that the rest of the channel improvements that will come through. And, uh, let's see, where was that picture of the, this? So, so this is what we want to get to, right? I mean, we're, the, the floodplain's pulled in. If you just do the bridge project, there's a little bit of impact on Kaprowski's property where it gets pulled in, and there's a little bit of impact down here, where basically this kind of, this finger really gets kind of pulled down. And that's probably about it. All of this stuff still happens. You really need to capture that flood, or that, those flows, and take them down the channel before these properties are really protected by the project.
I know the, the commissioners will have some questions, but just one last. Can you give us estimates on the time of construction under either scenario?
We're estimating, I think it's about six months. Might be more if we do the whole project as one, but probably in the order of six months or so.
That's for the whole project, if we go with the overbox culvert?
Yeah.
And then?
Because the majority of the work's going to be in, in the structure. You know, this, this grading could be going on at the same time that they're doing the, the structure.
And if we do the super box, how long would just the super box piece of it take?
Uh, I don't know. I think you might be looking at maybe another month.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner words?
Um, Alex, I don't know if this is your way of expressing yourself, but I got the, the sense that the 1.2 million dollar tab does some channel work, but not all channel work. There's other things. The way you express yourself, it seems like there's other things that need to be done, or what you would like to have done.
The 1.2 million with the overbank, um, it gets, it gets all the stuff done within Superior and the Superior open space. Uh, as you recall, uh, Coal Creek left its banks further upstream. Uh, but there's the old railroad bridge that, that crosses Coal Creek. And, and so there, there are improvements up there that would be nice to, to have made. That's in county open space. The county's not a partner in this particular project. Um, and so that's where we might extend the, the improvements to, to do some, some work up there to prevent Coal Creek from leaving the cha, channel even further upstream.
Do you think that should be done at this point in time as well? This extra work going?
Well, I, um, it, it would be nice, but I mean, we certainly don't have the, the funds to do that. Um, and those, it left, uh, the creek during this past flood event, which is more than a 100-year storm. So in the 100-year storm, it may be, may be okay. It may be contained in that, in the, in the culvert that's, that, in that area. But I think those, that's a good candidate for additional funds with a county project, a joint city, county, town, uh, project in the future.
And I take it that the choice of how we're dealing with the, the bridge is not going to impact this additional work?
No, no.
Okay.
I mean, either way, it's not going to get done.
No.
Right?
Right.
But the 1.2 would get the other part of the creek work done.
Yes, the improvements that Dave's, yes, with the overbank culvert.
Okay.
I did want to address Rita's, uh, comment about the trail. She wanted to know if the opening was sized for a trail to go under. And that was a, an issue that we looked at early on in the project. In fact, we had a bridge designed, so if we ever wanted to put a trail under, uh, you could do so. That created a very expensive bridge. Uh, we heard uh, loud from the public that that, they didn't want that going through. And the other issue is, this is a, this is a local road, Second Avenue, and you really need to go under. You can, if you had a trail along that corridor, you can always go up to grade and cross the street level. So we did, early on in the process, that was part of the criteria. As we went through and, and saw the costs, heard the input from the public, we took that out, so there isn't a possibility with these culverts for the trail to go under.
And just further on that, the creek is basically private property, so getting any kind of trail corridor through there would be not a small undertaking.
Right, I mean, we, yeah.
Am I correct in that?
We would have to have cooperation of the private property owners to be able to do it.
Okay. Additional questions?
No question.
Okay. I think all of my questions have been answered, so if you want to move into, move into a discussion phase of, you know, what, what each of us are thinking, getting what we've heard, okay?
Um, seems to me we'd get more done for 1.2 million than we do for 1.6, because we get the channel work. 1.6, we get a new span, no channel work. 1.2, we get the, the span extended for want of a better word, and we get channel work.
And improvement.
I think that's more important, getting all the channel stuff started, and, you know, a big step rather than something new and more expensive. So I would go for the 1.2 with the, because of the channel work that's come with it, that comes with it.
Okay.
I agree.
Go, Rita.
I do feel that, uh, and I don't think you need to quote unquote beautify it. I mean, I don't think it needs the additional away from the metal, you know, safety work and things like that. I think the 1.2 would give you more for your buck. Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Um, I agree. I think the, um, overbank is probably the way to go. It will sure help the, the stuff up, up above. And I've seen floods come down, and I've seen trees go through there, but, you know, in the last flood, we didn't have any trees or anything that went through there. And so it's like, that doesn't, you know, that doesn't concern me. Um, as far as the sidewalks, I don't think I'd be in favor of the sidewalks. Or a decorative railing. I think just plain railing would be fine. At this time, if something comes on the Rogers' plan, maybe that's something they pay for at a later time.
Okay. I, I agree with all of the other comments. I mean, I, I think that, you know, the flood mitigation piece of it is, is a big concern, and we ought to make sure that we have enough funding to take care of that. And, um, just hearing from the residents who are going to be using the bridge and seeing the bridge and living next to it, um, it sounds, it sounds to me like the preference is to do the overbox cul, overbank culvert if we're going to do this. And so I would tend to defer to whatever they want to do.
Okay. So from my perspective, if we were starting from a blank sheet of paper, I would really be pushing hard for the overbox culvert option, just for what it does long-term for the town. I think the Rogers' property is going to develop, and we're going to have a lot more people down there, and we're going to want a wider passage through there. We're going to want sidewalks, and we're going to wonder, why didn't we not do that? But I think there's some extenuating circumstances here where we're not starting from a blank sheet of paper. And what I've heard tonight is that the, you know, the, the flood mitigation piece on this, to me, is, is far more critical than, than anything at this point. Getting that, getting those channel improvements addressed, and, and getting it done sooner rather than later is, is to me the number one important piece here. So I, I'm going to be in favor of the overbank culvert option in order to get everything done. As for when the Rogers' property develops, I think that we will want a sidewalk on that east side of, of the road. And, and I think at that time, maybe it makes sense to put a pedestrian bridge, or a couple of pedestrian bridges, and, and that becomes part of that Rogers' property development, because they're going to want that, they're going to want that as an amenity to that development anyway. And, and that's probably when that makes the most sense to, to do those improvements at that time. So, that's, that's what I'm going with. And as far as the, the wall, bridge rail aesthetics go, I think that can be added later. It, uh, I'm generally not in favor of, of going cheap on things in, in order to add them later, but I, again, I think that in this point in time, getting those flood measures dealt with first is the most important thing. And then, uh, beautification to the bridge can come at another time, if, if that's deemed necessary. So, that's where I am. Okay. I think we've covered it. So.
What a motion?
A recommendation.
Okay. Is that the same one that's in our packet here?
Same one.
Yes. Okay. We have a motion in our packet. Do we, you have that up? You want to read that out?
Yeah. I, uh, move to recommend the Coal Creek flood mitigation plan with overbank culverts designed for the Second Avenue Coal Creek structure, accommodating 1% storm event design flows. New 28 feet wide by 16.13 feet high culvert, 24-foot width with metal bridge railing.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Sotell and second by Commissioner Eaton. All those in favor? Passes unanimous. Okay. All right, any, move on to the staff announcements?
Sure, we've, uh, I've captured kind of your comments regarding the aesthetics and the sidewalks, too. And so we'll make sure that we pass those on to the board when this reaches them. Um, as far as staff comments go for now, no meeting on August 5th. Um, things to kind of keep in mind upcoming, um, we have, the planning commission is, um, short, two members at this point. Bob McCool and Rochelle Riss-Master chose not to be reappointed. Uh, Jim Sotell and Phyllis Harden were reappointed. Um, so we have interviewed one, and there's a second applicant that is scheduled to be interviewed upcoming. I'm not certain of the date. So those positions hopefully will be filled soon. Um, at this point, we also have no vice chairman, or vice chair, pardon me, uh, vice chairman Bob McCool was not, um, reappointed. So next time, the planning commission has a full, um, commission present, be thinking of who you'd like to nominate and elect for the vice chairman, or chair, pardon me. And, um, upcoming events, or upcoming items, we do have a number of things, um, kind of in the works. The actual dates are not certain yet. Um, we have a small annexation of some property, um, near the cemetery that we need to, um, uh, do an annexation on. It was acquired during the US 36 right-of-way, um, alignment. The, we're anticipating an up, application for the Calmonte FDP and Final Platt, um, probably within the next few weeks. So that will be coming back for you. Um, and the rezone, um, the town recently is, um, under contract for the Shan Shan property, which would serve, um, one of the primary functions is to serve as the second access for original Superior, as, um, Alex and staff mentioned. Um, that property is currently zoned agriculture urban reserve. Boulder County was a partner in the purchase on that, and we will be rezoning it to open space. So the town would be the applicant on that. So those are some of the things that are coming up. Um, hopefully, even in August, we get some of these before you. Um, but we will keep you posted.
Okay.
Oh, and, sorry, Alex has an update for you as well on the triple left.
Great, thank you.
So you had seen the Marshall-McCaslin intersection last year, I think, and we commented on it. Uh, we've got, we've come to a point where we've actually awarded a contract for this, and I just want to update, because I think the planning commission expressed the concern about this. But, uh, as you recall, we had talked about a, a, adding a turn lane, a right turn lane by Conoco. Um, so we went back and, uh, didn't have the budget to do that, and for various reasons, we decided not, not to do it, but to, uh, instead create a, uh, right now, this lane is a through lane, the inside lane goes through to Mar, to East Marshall, and we're going to make that a shared through, which, uh, in order to do that, you have to have a split phase. So the east approach goes, and the west approach goes. Um, and so, so the left turn- So the east approach goes and the west approach goes, and so the left turns don't go together. So it involves a little bit more yellow time added to the intersection, but adding the lane should have positive impacts. So to accomplish this, we're going to take the pole on the northeast corner and relocate it, or actually install a new pole, take the old pole out. So scoot that back, scoot the curb and gutter back, and what that does is provide enough room for the three turn lanes, but also provides room for bike lanes on McCaslin. This is kind of a missing link, because we're going to have bike lanes across the bridge, and we have bike lanes south of this intersection. So this enables us to get a bike lane here, and we'll add a bike lane on that side, to have bike lanes all the way through on McCaslin. And then we also are going to restripe the northbound left turn for dual left turn lanes. As you know, right now, since we went to protected operation, we're getting spelled back, not all the left turning traffic can make it through the left turn signals. So we're going to include another left turn lane, and also by doing this, we're going to add our first flashing yellow light, flashing yellow left turn signal. So that's how we're going to be controlling that. So the contracts be awarded. Takes about three months to get the pole manufactured and delivered and installed, so it'll be probably towards the end of the year that this will be put in place.
Great, thanks for that update. Anything further? Okay. Meeting's adjourned. Thanks.